Yes.
The town of Vinylhaven Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty P M at the Vinylhaven Town Office located at nineteen Washington School Road. To hear a public comment on the proposed General Assistant Ordinance of Tennessee A through H. The complete document is available for review at the town office at nineteen Washington School Road.
You just called the, you know, just, you know, make a acknowledgement that we're opening the public hearing for any discussion comments.
The public hearing is open.
This is just public.
Are there any comments from the public? Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Questions from the board. One, two, three, did you get that?
Good thing I didn't, huh?
Public hearing is now over. We will start the board's meeting for a few days, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call. New door town manager, Iggy Bunker, fifty town clerk. Minutes. Prove the minutes in the office period.
Don't move.
Second, end of second. All the report. Number three, approve and sign treasuries warrant, number one.
Don't move.
Second, all the in favor? Number four, approve agenda, do we have any additions, Captain? I move the approved agenda presented.
Second.
All the favor? Number five, communications. The nine.
Uh, we, I did one that came in today. It was sent to Eric, which was a reminder that I gotta let MMA know that we have a new chair. Um, but apparently, um, we were, um, selected as second place in our town's population range for the town annual town report. Contest for, to MMA. So they're just acknowledging that we had a good, a, a, a good town report, a well put together town report. So that, so MMA, Mamisble Association every year does this judging of town reports and just to say, whose do we like? And they, they put you in categories of town size. They sent us an email the day saying we were number two in our, in our.
What is it, like a thousand, point five hundred?
Something like that, yeah.
Oh, cool.
So, so that was my, well, I'm two of the office.
Yeah, yeah, Darlene and Tanya and all the department heads that put stuff in on that and.
Second place is first loser.
Exactly, there you go.
You said that was MMA?
Yep. It's the first time, first time we've been in it.
Number six, speakers from the floor. Is there an un-present, are there any online? Going once, going twice. We move on to number seven, committee and department reports appointments, seven A library report. Any questions from the board, comments?
So what is the, they're, they're open those hours of the day?
They're open, they've been open for, since, um, right after the fourth, I think. They're same hours they had been prior to.
How often does the board of trustees meet?
The trustees, I think we're meeting. They hadn't met for a while, um, during, um, you know, the early parts of COVID and throughout a good chunk of it, but, um, where they're about to go through, um, uh, creating the review, so the, the state has a trustee's handbook. Um, and they've done a, I think, a really good job separating the two different types of boards. There's the advisory board, which is what ours is. And there's the governing board, which if it was a library standing on its own, it would likely have the governing board. Um, so they're gonna go through that manual, um, and review that and try and refine some of their policies and bylaws and that kind of stuff. And so in light of that and, um, some of the other projects, the website, um, rebuild, um, there's a couple of other things that they highlighted. They're gonna meet twice a month now instead of, I think it was, I think it was either once or every other month. Um, so I think, I think they're planning to now or to meet twice a month, try and work through some of that.
So what are, like, I see that having.
No, sorry, once a month.
Having like a story time. What is their, uh, like, policy on who can, you know, do stuff like that? Do they have to be, that is like a school feature, you know, like fingerprinted or how does all that stuff work?
Not that I'm aware of, I think it's more of a volunteer.
That wants to can go to the board of trustees and if they get approved, they can go and read.
Yeah, I mean, you start with the librarian even presumably.
Like if they have the same rules as schools, uh, what?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's a better question to clarify with, with them.
Presumably, you would know, uh, people not know. You wouldn't, when they're in a small town, but, I mean, the board can someone from away comes over here. And I'll find the person you want, I guess, I, I don't, I mean, just making sure if there's someone doing, I mean, I'm not worried about Sue obviously, but like, I mean, I don't know what the protocol and stuff are. They just ask the librarian, say, name and then.
Yeah, if someone's interested in volunteering to read, I certainly would suggest they approach, yeah, Scott and see if, if and when they could volunteer to do that. And that would, I assume that would be a great thing to have people wanting to do.
Well, you know, I've been to the library. Obviously, a lot bigger library than you have, but they have heart. You know, it's not just, just reading the books, I mean, not a different thing. So there's no policy that says what can and what can't be allowed.
Again, better confirm with Scott, yeah. I'm not aware of those.
We're technically a boss, it's like board.
Hmm.
And there's nothing they are saying that say one, one thing you allow you.
Not that I know of, I mean, anyone that wants to be hired and be as an employee, he's personnel policy and goes through that thing, but it's phone wants to come in and volunteer to host a program of some sort, just, I understand would be to clear it with the librarian to see if they can host a program there. Um, you know, and they either go through a process of getting it approved through the trustees or I'm not exactly sure how that works with them. Once someone approaches them, but I would start there, just checking with librarian. Uh, I didn't ask today if it was, um, as far as I know, it was just a matter of, um, we ended up drilling ourselves through the building. As far as I know, the lines in there, I don't know if it's up and running yet. Um, we are working to try and get the paving part of the project done up there for the salt shed. Uh, we do have to prep the, the base there, um, with some crushed rock gravel. Um, we're gonna put some fabric down, um, geotextile fabric to keep water from coming up. Um, cause it does have a bit of water that comes in through the foundation blocks coming down that hill. Um, so planning on doing that this week. Um, and the company, there was one company that bid on the project to do the paving up there, um, wouldn't incur it, put that out. And they're already gonna be out here sometime in September doing some other jobs anyways, so they had added that to those, I haven't confirmed and signed off on it, but, um, that's the intention. Yeah, I have nothing else to compare it to, I guess, so it's, yeah.
If they thought it was fire, I think.
Right. I think the fact that they're already here is gonna be the best you can, we're gonna get, you know, for someone bringing. Oh, we definitely need to. Yeah.
Before it gets involved.
It's, it should be sometime this month. Yeah.
You want eight old business? No, no, is that correct? Right, and then you want nine new business, general assistant ordinance, attend to C A through H. Approved that we signed any, uh, new general, obviously, general assistant ordinance, attend to C A through H. Second. All the favor? Which one was sorry?
She'll, she'll send one around.
I don't know, that's the time.
Next, that's the next one. Print, print your name on the left side, sign on the line next to it on the right.
Wouldn't be worried about many, I don't make mistakes. I'm gonna have to call speed when I leave the man.
Thank you.
Nine, approve and sign special town election warrant, November second.
I move, we sign the special town election warrant for November second, twenty twenty.
Second, all the favor, sorry, any discussion? None, all the favor?
So this is just the violating warrant, it's gotta be a statement too, because there's a couple different things coming out.
The local ballot.
When, when does people have to have their signature, or is it already coming down?
Uh, a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Hopefully, there's at least one version.
That, that was for school board?
School board, yeah. I think so.
We already filled it temporarily, so.
Yeah. Great, um, working with, um, the staff in the office to come up with the, review the job description of the deputy town clerk. We do have an opening, uh, vacancy in that position. Um, one of the thoughts was to look at possibly, you know, if we wanna look at making it two part-time positions, just kind of building some redundancy in the office if someone else is out and potentially another person that might be able to come in and fill in, um, it's kind of splitting and adding to the job description so that there'd be someone that can help with communication, website, updates, um, so social media stuff, if we need to put that out, the win stuff. Um, that was something that gave physician was affording us to be able to do and do well. Um, I think it's shown since she's not working with us, um, the lack of, you know, that ability. Um, so most of the stuff that goes out usually comes from me, but, um, it'd be nice to have someone else capable and able to do that. Um, we're gonna continue to offer that communicate, level of communication. So that was one thought was to split the positions into two and, and try and incorporate one of them with the communication stuff. So I don't know if folks, you know, I was kind of gonna rely more on the staff to kind of give me a better sense of how they feel about it. Um, could still put it out as two different options, one full-time position and then two part-times and just see what comes in for applicants and decide based on that. Um.
Put it out there both ways, hopefully someone will buy.
Something you could ever do with, partner in the school and seeing, if you need to see me, not one from, that kind of work, if they could offer.
I wouldn't say it's out of the, oh, possibility, um, there's lots to consider, lots to consider there. Yeah, um, lots to consider, I don't know if I'd try and combine it with the positions, um, at all. Um, it sounds like, I mean, there's opportunity, certainly if someone's interested, we could always talk about them coming in and job shadowing or interning if they want, um, to learn more about it. Right. Yeah, the certainly the how to navigate and how to make it happen is one thing, and then there's the, the ability to be able to, to communicate. Um, knowing how and how the tools work is a whole other thing that a lot of us internally could all use improvements on. Um, auditing, we do need to finalize that, I wanna get that out this week, trying, trying to work with, um, Tina and, and Valerie up at the school to put it out at the same time, two separate RFPs, but with the same, perhaps with a shared cover letter. Um, there's benefits, we need to have, my understanding is that because the school, the amount of, the, the taxes we collect, the large, a, a large amount of it goes to the school, that activity, we need to include a blended audit report of the school's activity in ours, which is why we do that. Um, and so it'd be advantageous to have the same firm doing both. Um, so there's no issue with timing and communicating it, um, you know, from one to the next. So that, that was one of the things we've been working through, sending out, you know, the two RFPs together, um, in the hopes that we'll find a firm, um, and to be able to come back in the timeline that, um, we now have. Yeah, they gave us notice this spring that they wouldn't be, um, doing the audit anymore for, they were downsizing. The auditor that we've had assigned to us for the town side of things that we've worked with closely at that firm, I think, is still planning on being in that field of work, but working on his own. Um, you know, so perhaps he'd be one of the ones interested in in responding to that, um, you know, but we'll put out the RFP nonetheless, it's been a while, um, I think it was, might be close to ten years since we put the RFP out. I'm hoping we don't have a, a, um, challenge, you know, just generally hearing that some of the smaller entities are having a hard, hard time finding new auditors. Um, you know, as they're starting, trying, been trying to look. I don't think it has to be anyone in me necessarily.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know.
Yeah, maybe we'd wanna be confident in their ability to follow the GASP standards and report back to that, um, for the, for the, for the state's sake and the community's sake. That's all part of the process there to review candidates, so. Um, the commissioners, Knox County Commissioners had, uh, a meeting this afternoon, I did tune in for a little bit. Um, and mostly interested in what their next steps were for the ARPA funding. Um, I had submitted, as we had talked, the different project requests, um, and there, you know, there was no decisions, it was the first time, you know, chance for them to really review and see what came in. Um, I, I missed the start of that conversation, so I don't know how many came in entirely or what the dollar amount was for, for all of them, but, um, they spent a while talking about, you know, next steps. Um, and it sounds like they're gonna be able to review it between the next, now and the next meeting. Um, you know, and at the next meeting, they may or may not take action on any of them. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, how do they decide, you know, there was no real rubric or criteria when we submitted the application, so you didn't really know you know, exactly how you'd be graded or which, which, which were higher priorities than not in the, in the list of items you could do of the, the act support. So, um, that's something that they're gonna have to contend with when they, as they're going through and deciding how to proceed. And, you know, there's no, there's no rush or requirement to spend it, you know, now or within the next six months or even two years, you got till twenty twenty-four to, um, commit to the expenditure until twenty twenty-six to expend it. Um, you know, the rules are still interim final rules, they aren't final. What I've seen and what little I know about it, um, it seems that, uh, there's perhaps a little more leeway while it's in the interim final rule phase than whatever might come in the final. Um, you know, and I don't know if that's why people are rushing, you know, while it's still a little gray, but once it becomes a final rule and it's gonna be more certain. So that, that's been my thing, is, you know, just kind of waiting to see what that final rule does determine is what, what's eligible and how the, when we report to the government and how we spent that money, we're gonna have to need to make sure it's spent in the way they intended it to be and prove that it was, so wanna see how that is. Um, I did, I did submit our request to the state to get our half, the first half of our funds, um, I think it was a hundred and, hundred and nineteen thousand, I guess, is, I think is what it was, it's due to come to Vinylhaven, um, from the state, so we got the first half of that, I think, coming this week. So our plan is to put that into a separate account at the bank and let it be there, and then we'll have to come up with a way to figure out how we wanna proceed and. Yeah, yeah. So it is a long list and there's a lot of options in there and, you know, it is something, again, something that we should talk about. You know, part of me wants to see how the county wants to proceed to see is, are they gonna be able to, to match, support, supplement, you know, and then we can decide, you know, what they're not gonna be doing, do we wanna consider that? Right. Yeah, there's a pretty sizable document, it's just an interim final rule, so if they were to change any of it, so it was open a public comment, the whole country to comment on, um, and if any of those interim rules might get modified, like the criteria for what's underserved for broadband, if you wanna invest in broadband or, uh, understanding if you invest in the other infrastructure and water or sewer, like, are there criteria that you need to prove that there was a need related to the COVID crisis? Um, or if you go into supporting programs for housing and homelessness, I mean, are there metrics that we're expected to gather and report back to prove what exactly? So that's been, I think, the, I mean, there's a lot in there now, but it is all interim final. Yeah, I just assume wait for that to be final.
Yeah.
Um, if it intends to come soon, if it doesn't, then we should, yeah, we should talk about it more. But I don't know if, if, I know, if you guys wanna talk about how, do you wanna to mean a, a, go through the budget committee to kind of whittle it down, or do you wanna just kind of amongst yourselves, kind of throw a few ideas? Do you wanna host a workshop among, you know, with the community to talk about how best we could do this? Or do you wanna start with a, a big list and say, we wanna prioritize and focus on, you know, this, these items and go from there with the community? Or how do you think you might wanna handle deciding how we spend it?
Well, I think we should just, we can see what enough time, and then we send it for a week time, for any ideas we don't.
Yeah, we have to have the final rules and also see what's going to, but, I don't wanna.
Like if there's a way to get our funds matched by not counting to do a certain thing, it'd be better to do more money than, than say, okay, we're gonna spend it on A, and then five months later they come up and said, well, if you had done it this way, we would have met, so I mean, I think, I wish you just hold up. I mean, for a couple of months at least before we, I mean, the budget committee's not gonna stop meeting till January.
Right.
Anyway, so we have time to decide on that.
That's why, we have a long list.
Okay. Uh, let's see, was given notice from the attorneys that there was a procedural hearing last, I guess, two weeks ago now. Um, and it was agreed that the foundation is gonna withdraw the declaratory judgment action. Um, that was the one where basically it was saying that we're taking too long, um, in the request for the, the judge to rule on it now. Um, updated the ADB complaint. That they, um, that it challenges Wes's most recent decision. Um, they won't be challenging it, and then the attorneys are gonna, both attorneys are gonna file a joint procedural order asking the judge to finally affirm the decision without another remand, that would, if they were to do another remand, it would be the third remand, so at this point.
They filed that, it didn't pass the rule on this.
Well, Wes, Wes sent something in, what, like, a month ago now? Six weeks ago, when he told him he had to refile or whatever.
Yeah, so the complaint was that we haven't taken action, and so now they're gonna acknowledge that he has taken action, we still, they're still gonna challenge that, but now it's, both attorneys are now saying, judge, you need to make a decision. Um, and we'll just have to see where that goes. Yeah. The complaint, the ADB complaint, if I got it right, was filed because we hadn't responded um, in a manner in which in time that they felt was necessary or, or was. I'll make a final determination, yeah, presumably.
But then there's also, is it, is it also going to the interest of the property, is that all in there or not?
Yeah, actually.
It's, I think, uh, the last word we got from the judge was that that kind of included all of those items in there, and I think that's going to be, you know, part of our argument is, you know, you can't definitively say by only looking at this piece of the law because you need to meet all of these other two pieces as well. Um, so the judge started looking at it very narrow, interpret, you know, part of that decision process, so we're, we're, we're expecting to include all of the metrics that need to be met. It's been our case. Anyone, anyone seeking tax exempt status, it depends on the type of, the type of, um, tax exemption or this type of status you're going for, there's different types of nonprofits. And so depending on which type you are, there might be slightly different criteria. There's a component that requires ownership, I would not wanna paraphrase and say it wrong, but it's in the statute, part of it does require ownership, uh, to a degree.
When is that expected or is not expected at any time?
We'd all like it, we'd all like it, you know, as soon as possible, but.
But I mean, I didn't know if the lawyer said, oh, he's gonna look at it.
I haven't heard.
The next three months or he's gonna.
Yeah, yeah, I think we started this, I think we started this in the fall of nineteen, so. Um, regarding, uh, COVID, uh, put a couple of updates out last week, uh, to the community. Uh, you know, met with the, um, our public health team, putting the school and a couple of staff from the medical center. Um, so we are, you know, we do continue to, to meet more as needed and as frequent as necessary. Um, so, uh, folks are aware of that, um, and will continue to provide updates as, as we need to. Capital projects.
So right now, I mean, there's no, like, mask, they need to go on into the businesses to do whatever they wanna do, how the states are.
As far as I know, the state has not issued mandates for masks. Yes, they probably will talk more about that, I'm guessing tomorrow, um, the, the state is doing weekly, at this point, weekly CDC updates, um, as they've had before. Um, so I can, I'll tune into that and imagine there'll be more to share on any of that trickle down and how that affects main businesses and how they'll move forward with that. Haven't heard anything more from ED, the possibility of EDA funding, um, you know, that is something that we're hopeful to hear one way or the other. Um, still fairly soon, um, but that's, as we said, the last kind of big domino, if that's something that we're able to, to get or need to reapply, um, it'd be nice to know sooner rather if we can get the application going again if we have to. Um, yeah, it'd be nice to know sooner rather, if we can get the application going again if we have to. Even that. That was all I had.
All right. Board members.
What sort of legal ability do individual municipalities have to have vaccine mandates? This seems like that's, we're probably at the point now that that makes the most sense. You, you know, it's, it's a little pathetic that they've been on, you know, vaccine has been available since what, January? And available to everybody since April. So if you're not vaccinated, you're not allowed to go into any business, you're allowed to go into any public space, inside space anyway. Seems like. About time.
I don't know of our legal ability to reach that far, I could certainly inquire with MMA, um.
I would think public business like. Could, could possibly, but I mean, I don't think that we could tell them. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking like what City New York did.
How about if people who are not living here?
It's like down, it'll hopefully better figure it out before you go someplace.
Yeah, no, I, I'll, I'll ask before we go down this road too much further, probably, I mean, there's big differences between, like, even the city of Portland was, I mean, not met vaccines, but with masks. Um, the, the governance structure is different than ours, you know, we have a town meeting from a government, you know, so if you're doing it via order, I don't know exactly what mechanism they're using to enforce. Or to implement it, if it's a, a matter of like a state of emergency or a civil state of emergency that they're declaring or how they're. That's something that the board's curious about, I can ask.
I'm at least, I mean, I mean, I think we should be allowed to do whatever we want, but. You know, it's just the shame that people who are being very selfish are holding back. Everybody else and putting people who aren't, who can't get vaccinated at risk, you know, it's now well-known science that. Children across the country where they are getting sick of COVID is in places where vaccination rates are lower than others.
That's the same with any vaccine, though.
Well, yeah, natural.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, it's always put the immunocompromised people at higher risk.
You know, if, if, you know, if there's children around and everybody else around them vaccinated, the chances of them contracting. You know, that island is much, much lower.
Is it true that Vinyl Haven's over ninety percent vaccinated? I thought I heard someone say that they.
I don't recall what the number is.
We're above the average.
Right.
For Maine and for the nation.
Yeah.
It's higher than.
Patients' record, yeah.
Oh, Vinyl Haven residents, I don't know if that was eighteen-year-old or twelve-year-old about that or. I mean, that's why that, if anyone else.
I know it's high, I don't know the exact number, but I know it's high.
I mean, if it's over nine percent, that's a theory to be.
Yeah, we talked about it last spring, you know, that bottom number is important, how do you determine what the bottom number, the number of people we're talking about, what's the population that you're trying to circle around, is it the census? Population and do you take that number of people over the number of vaccines, but the number of people that are coming to the clinic to be able to get, ask for the vaccine aren't limited to the census count of people, so. You know, we did, we always did talk a lot about that last year, and that bottom numbers, kind of, which, what are you using for it?
But I mean, say I wanted, I hadn't been vaccinated, I wanted my.
As far as I know, you can go to the medical center.
There's, I, I got my.
You can still go if you want.
And there's, there's chatter about the booster as well.
Yeah.
No, I, I was just curious of that, how it works, because before, I guess now it's not an emergency rule, now it's approved, they can do whatever, that's how it changed.
It was before, it was just.
Also, the number of doses per vial, so that no doses were wasted, that's one of the reasons why the clinics were done, is because it was eleven doses per vial, so they didn't wanna waste any.
Oh, and an effort to get as many as possible out in one day, right, and then, and so that, those were good ways to get a lot of people vaccinated at once, and so now what they'll do is, if you call it, they want you to call ahead. And they still got the vial and they still got, they don't wanna waste them, so right, and my guess is that they're probably trying to coordinate a certain number of people at, at the same time. Yeah, definitely call ahead.
It's changed, I think it's changed since.
Probably get one every day or two or something, but I didn't know that. I, I, I did have one that thing. On the airstrip, have we had any surveys or any more movement, we've been talking about this for a while now, I haven't, I don't watch the agenda.
I haven't, we didn't specifically, doesn't need any funds to do it, and I don't have, we didn't, I don't have any that I say work with, so. Um, haven't done a survey with, you know, we haven't had any pressure from PIA to actually say they're not gonna, I mean. It's one thing, there's, there's smaller runways than what we have, so, but no, I have not been able to, if we wanna add it to the budget. Right. Right, yeah, and we didn't, in having, uh, we didn't have it in the budget for this year.
So that's something that should be on.
Yeah.
Try and at least. Get it.
I mean, more, more. Yeah, I mean, I think the bigger, the bigger next step is the ownership issues of crossing, cause I mean, we're fairly certain where the pins are now that we, you know, had walked it. I think, um, can't remember exactly where that, off the top of my head, where, where it lined up, I think our, again, our biggest challenge. Now is gonna be the property ownership conversation, because we're gonna go into, if they go two hundred feet, they'd cross into two properties. Um, so it's more, I think, at this point, more figuring out what that would take, what likelihood of that would be, understanding what that cost would be. Um, getting a better sense of the cost to actually do the extension work. I know on North Haven, I talk with Rick frequently, and of course, they've got their own challenges with trying to figure out airstrip use up there. And, you know, at one point, it was shared that PIA needed to have whatever the length of Watson's is created. I, I wanna say it was upwards of twenty-five hundred feet, but I can't remember exactly what the length is, fifteen. Um, you know, so, but when I heard that, I'm thinking, well, if that's what it needs to be, ours is nowhere near that, and are we gonna have to make ours that, you know, so it was kind of this number that kind of keeps. Changing as I'm following what they're going through, um, so it's.
Yeah, I know, okay, so that's something that we. Make sure that they need to appropriate one of these, don't forget if you get. Stuff moving on that, I mean, we don't wanna, you know, then have some. Ambulance air rule that says they have to have a certain length runway and then they'd be screwed and not be watching, but I mean, that's kind of a, we definitely need to.
Yeah.
I mean, I know the helicopter could still come, but I mean, they do still fly a lot of people on the plane, but.
They do, yeah, and I'd, I'd be fortunate if they um, determined what a minimum runway length must be for an operator to fly in and out of, the. The mostly what they've uh, focused on is the equipment and what's in or on the air, airplane being used as a medevac. Um, you know, if you wanted someone like PIA to be able to bring their plane in, their fixed wing, you'd have to have, I think, at least twenty-five hundred feet and paved. Um, for that type of fixed wing to come in, um. But it's never, so far, it hasn't been about the, the runway capability as much as it is the operator's equipment in.
Probably more about the operator.
Right, yeah, the plane size and ability to, to land safely. Uh, yeah, I did ask. I did ask, and I briefly remember him saying, it depends on the type of use that's being proposed, as to what would need, you know, the second exit is one of the, probably the more. Bigger questions we had had, if it would require a second point of egress. Um, and I didn't dive further into it, but I did ask and they did say it would depend on the type of use going in, so I think we were more or less. Kind of grandfathered, if you will, when the addition, when the upgrades and all the renovation was done, because it was, it stayed the same use, is what I was getting from that. Um, we didn't change how that was, that space was being used from the upgrade, so. I'll go back and look at that further and see what they had said if we need to do more. I'll throw a few ideas out there, that just kind of covers the range of what it could be to the insurance folks and see what we would need for each one.
What was in, what, was in one of the things, the van and, what, what was it? No, there was another one.
Kinder music players, someone had asked about the players using it, um, of course, the bet still uses it, you know, once a, twice a month, whatever it is. Um. I think those were the only two that I had heard. Yeah. Thursday, yeah.
Second.